Next, we have the Board of Education norms, which are available in board docs if you'd like to read them. And next, we have approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda of the December twentieth, twenty twenty-two regular open session meeting.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next, we have the MSBA monthly report.
Welcome to the December edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the twenty twenty-two MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators. This year's event was once again held in Kansas City. School safety was the theme of the first general session. During that session, MSBA's Executive Director Melissa Randall made a major announcement regarding funding to support school district needs for emergency operations, planning, and development.
The Department of Public Safety is providing funding for all school districts throughout the state of Missouri to receive for free the application for emergency operation planning that many of you have been using that MSBA developed a few years ago. And so that application, that online tool, along with the training and the support, will now be available to all school districts for free.
MSBA's Center for Education Safety is offering free webinars, so your school district can find out how to take advantage of this great resource and get trained on the implementation, numerous features, and use of your emergency operations planning tool. Visit the MSBA website for more information on webinar registration. Missouri's twenty twenty-three Teacher of the Year Christina Andrade Melly spoke during the conference's third general session and banquet. The evening was dubbed "A Night of Champions," and she stressed the importance of being a champion for public schools.
We have done things in education in the last three years that we could never have imagined. The extraordinary has become ordinary because it's what we needed to do for our students and our communities. But I'd encourage you to reach out to the people who did that work. Colleagues on your board, your staff, your families, your communities. Thank them, recognize them, and then go out and tell somebody else about it. If we are not telling the stories of public education, of the struggles and the triumphs, somebody else is going to tell our story for us.
Conference general session keynote speakers included school safety experts Michelle Gay, John McDonald, and Frank DeAngelis, former NASA astronaut Dr. Bernard A. Harris, and one of the greatest Olympic track and field athletes of all time, Jackie Joyner-Kersee. The conference featured more than ninety concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, Missouri's premier education trade show, the Education Expo, and MSBA's student showcase of public school programs. MSBA's delegate assembly met in conjunction with the annual conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work during the coming year. Speaking of advocacy, the twenty twenty-three regular session of the Missouri General Assembly convenes on January fourth. MSBA will keep you informed on developments during the legislative session through our weekly Legislative Voice newsletter, critical issue alerts, and immediate updates. Information on legislative issues can also be found on MSBA's Action Center website. And mark your calendar now for MSBA's Legislative Forum, to be held in Jefferson City on March twenty-eighth. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and thank you for all that you do to ensure all students succeed. We leave you this month with words of inspiration from Olympic champion Jackie Joyner-Kersee on the power school board members have by being champions for children.
The greater we are, the more challenges we will face. Because everyone loves to lift you up, but they really be trying to find a way to tear you down. So the work is never done. So continue to on that journey, continue to work hard, continue to meet those challenges. No matter how challenging it is, none of you are giving up on education, giving up on our young people. So you give them the hope, you give them the guidance, you give them the light. Because a lot of our students are in dim lights and don't believe that it's possible. But you give them the hope that the impossible is probable. So keep doing what you're doing and shining that light.
You know, every speaker that was down there was amazing. We had a real good speaker system.
Thank you. Next, on the agenda, we have the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item we have is guidelines for public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Per policy BDDH dash one, public participation at board meetings. The following guidelines and procedures will be followed in order to speak during public participation. A public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I do not have any public comment cards.
I do not either.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have report of the superintendent.
Yes, um, we have notes of appreciation, which are there every month. Um, my next item is to remind everyone that last month, the board set the procedures for the annual school board election. The election will be held on Tuesday, April fourth. We have three expiring terms, Mr. Eric Bosler, Mr. James Kirschner, and Mrs. Martha Reesinger. Uh, filing opened on December sixth and will continue. Every day, the district office is open from eight to four. Uh, filing will not occur on days when the office is closed due to inclement weather. And from what we saw this afternoon, that might be Thursday, so keep an eye out. We will, if we have to close, we will make sure we send out a notification. And the filing will not occur on December twenty-third or twenty-sixth, as the office will be closed for the holidays. Filing will end Tuesday, December twenty-seventh at five P M. At this time, the three incumbents have filed. Um, if we do not have any other candidates file for those seats, the school district will not have to run an election. Um, that's in Missouri law, so we will see, and no more on the twenty-seventh at five oh one. So. Um, next, I wanted to share some new information. Uh, we have set kindergarten registrations. Um, Saint Genevieve Elementary will hold theirs on Saturday, March twenty-fifth, eight A M. to one, two P M. Bloomsdale Elementary is Saturday, April first, eight A M. to one P M. Uh, we will open up and begin scheduling appointments on Tuesday, February twenty-first. Um, and in the slide, I put the extensions for both of the building's offices. So, good times. And lots of wonderful things happen that day. Um, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McLeod. He's going to talk about standardized test scores and annual performance.
So you may notice on the slide there, and it's linked as well, that APR is crossed out. The reason for the, oh wow, that's really small. The reason for that is because we don't have historical data since we've moved into MSIP six. So this is really year one, um, so we won't be able to have that growth and progress data that we typically do over the course of three years. In our ACT data, you can see that we have the composite super score and the composite score. The difference. The difference between the two is that the composite super score is actually the best performance that students have. The composite score is, is the score that, um, was last taken. So a student theoretically could take it, um, in September, score a twenty, and then take it in December and score a nineteen, so the nineteen would be part of the composite score. The twenty would be part of the composite super score. And you can kind of see that over the course, we've heard of, um, you know, some of the learning that needs to be accelerated over the course of the last few years. You can kind of see that here where, um, we've been hit by COVID, we haven't been in the classrooms as much. So you'll see, you'll see a little bit of that as well. Um, academic achievement, like I said, we have status, and that's the only piece of this right now that we have. As, as the years go on, we'll have growth and progress. And then that gives you more of an accurate picture of how we're performing because judging it off of one year, it could be, well, is that one cohort of students, or is that the performance of that grade level? Um, and so that's explained there in the status. It's a three-year average. Uh, before, it was one point per below basic, three for basic, four for proficient, five. And so, for instance, if you look at basic and you have thirty-five students, you'd multiply that out by three. That would give you a number of one oh five. You would do that with the corresponding values. Um, so if you have those values, it would equal up to four thirty-five as you multiplied them out. And then you take the average, and that would give you your MPI. So if you have twenty students in below basic, that's worth twenty points. If you have thirty-five in basic, you multiply that out by three, that's one oh five. Forty students in, um, proficient, that would give you a hundred sixty. Advanced, thirty students, times five, that'd give you one fifty. You add them all up, that gives you four hundred thirty-five, and then you divide it by the number of students that you have, and that would give you your MPI, which would be a three hundred forty-eight. And then the three hundred forty-eight essentially tells you kind of where you're falling as far as, um, students and their average performance. So under MSIP six, they've adjusted it a little bit, so instead of just one whole point, it could be one to two point nine nine. That being, because below basic is a wide range, so with below basic, you could be just at the cusp of basic, but you're still only getting one point in the old system. So then you'd be assigned two point nine nine or two point eight nine and get that full value of where you're scoring. That gives a more accurate picture of where the students are actually scoring, where, where the district's actually performing as well. So it's going to be able to give us a little bit more information as far as where we're at. We only have one year of data, so as time goes on, it'll give us more of an accurate picture. Our building and grade level data, our grade level assessments, and E L A for three, four, five are up here on the charts. We have the state averages on the top, and then, um, our elementary combined on the bottom. Overall, our performance is above the state level. So third grade is in green, and fourth grade's in the pinkish, and fifth grade is in yellow. So you can kind of compare those numbers. And E L A in six, seven, eight, sixth grade's in green, seventh grade's in pink, eighth grade's in yellow. And again, we are, for the most part, above, um, some of the grades a little bit higher than, than others on the state average. And then our E O C for English, we're at a three ninety-six point five. The state is at a three ninety-five point nine, so it's close, but, um, we are just under the state on that one. And then in mathematics, again, there's our elementary, and then on the top is the state average. So we're significantly higher in math than three, four, five, and then six, seven, eight. Six is in green, seven is in pink, eight is in yellow. So again, we're above state average. And then in algebra one, the E O C, we're just below the state average. They have changed their rules to where, where the student takes algebra one is where they're going to take the E O C. Some of the school districts in the state were waiting, and they were having them take it so they could be part of certain, like the high school, um, numbers versus the junior high numbers. So that's a rule that has been changed. Science, we have our fifth grade. It's not given in third and fourth grade, so it's more of a cumulative, um, assessment for all those grade spans. So we're above the state average as well. And then in eighth grade, we're above it as well. In biology, we're pretty close. We're above it. And in our social studies, we have our E O C, and we are above the state average there as well. Our annual performance report is out soon in the memos. That was about as much information as we were given, so we're hoping we're going to have that pretty soon. Once we get that, we'll, we'll break that down for you as well, and we'll kind of study and see where we can improve. And that is the entire report. Did I miss anything on that one?
Can you elaborate more on the algebra? So you're saying, i- it, since we offered algebra to junior high students, um, as opposed to high school, therefore our number would theoretically be lower than?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to affect our overall number, but a lot of people, I think, are playing. So it may affect the state. They're trying to say, well, we want these scores in high school, so they would have those students wait until, until they got to high school and then take that, even though they've already had a course in between them. So the state's saying, no, once, once you take algebra and when a grade's assigned, that's when you need to be taken.
I guess that kind of makes sense because you've seen elementary, the middle school, we were higher, higher, and then bam, a little bit lower, so.
Yeah.
And those students will still be required to take an E O C. They will have to take the algebra two E O C. So it's a, it's a requirement that they have to have one while they're in high school. It will just be after the completion of a different course for those students that take that advanced algebra class.
So for us, it was avoiding having to take two tests, but now they're going to have to. Dr. McLeod, um, I know we've dealt with different tests over multiple years, and then you throw the pandemic in there. Are there comparisons of this year versus last year versus pre-pandemic?
I, I think if you think back to the presentations we've given in the past, pre-pandemic, we've been significantly above the state average um, in most categories, and then when we were close to the state average, we identified that as a focus area for us. We, we are still above in some categories, uh, but we're, we've slid back closer to that state average, and I think that's, um, a result of the pandemic learning loss. Our hope is, you know, now that they're back in school, and it's, it's, it's a challenge, has been, and will continue to be a challenge to address, uh, them being out of school for that length of time, but with our staff, I, I feel like we can do it. It's just going to take some time. You also have to remember that all the MPI scores for three years are averaged together to get our district MPI for our APR. We're only going to have one year of that, so this is it. So when there's no, you have a good class come through and get that really high MPI score, or you have a lower class come through and get a low, it's, it's not averaged out. We, we get what we get for the next two years. Next year, it'll be averaged two years, and then that third year, it'll be averaged three. So we're hoping to gain on, on the Missouri averages.
There's no concern really from an academic standpoint, I guess, really, um, that we're not going to succeed there, correct?
I, I don't have any, no. I have full faith that we're going to get back to where we need to be.
And I think when you talk to people, just even today, as I talk to different teachers, like I keep saying, this year feels a lot more like normal, like I thought last year would, but last year was really tough for whatever reason. So I feel like the more we get into that routine, um, we're going to see our scores go back up.
And there's been significant changes in the test, too.
Yes, that's true.
Right before the pandemic, at the, at least at the high school, the E O C test changed significantly. So in the past, we were seeing numbers of students that were seventy, eighty percent advanced and proficient. And when the new test comes out across the state, that number is now, uh, closer to forty, fifty percent advanced and proficient. So they, they made the test more, more difficult. Um, but in doing so, I think it's been a learning curve for, for a lot of districts and a lot of, a lot of subject areas, specifically getting in and figuring some of those pieces out.
This is an ignorant question. E O C is truly at the end of the year, or is it just mid, mid?
March.
End of course, yeah, yeah. So March, okay.
Are there a lot of students that take the ACT?
So we had to jam. Do you want to handle this one? Sorry.
Well, I can, I can jump in, and then you can add to it. Um, I think traditionally, so originally, the state paid for everybody, this was years back, paid for everybody to take the ACT, and then districts had to make a choice, are we going to continue to pay for everybody? I believe Saint Jen decided that's what we're going to do. But in exploring that a little bit further, uh, the counselors, along with high school administration, have kind of talked about, well, there's a lot of students that take this test, but don't see an application for, well, why am I taking this test? That's not the pathway I'm going. So they're offering, tell me again, uh?
ACT work keys. So, so the kids, the, the parents are basically going to have an opportunity to make a determination if their child is going to take the ACT or the ACT work keys. And work keys is geared more towards workforce readiness, gives them, uh, something that they can take, a standard that they can take to an employer and say, I scored at the platinum level, or I scored at the gold level. And those employers will understand what that means and gives them a better barometer of, all right, this individual is geared more for this job that we have or this job that we offer, and kind of gives them a workforce or an industry standard to go across. Um, it was interesting when I went down to the consortium meeting, uh, Mr. Hayden down there actually had some questions that they had. And I will tell you what, they're, they're stinking challenging. They, they're not, they're not super easy. You know, you get in and you, you hear it, and it's different than the ACT, and so you sit down and you take it, and it's, it's very applicable. So like the math questions are very applicable, uh, real-world math. Uh, but they're not, i- it's not just getting in and taking something that's super easy. It will challenge our students, uh, but will also provide them something that will be a little bit more tangible and, and meaningful for them. Um, and so when you look at that number, you know, we tested a hundred and forty-seven students last year in, with the ACT, and that's, you know, that's sophomores, juniors, seniors, um, across the board. Um, that number will go down this next year as we're testing more students with ACT work keys. Um, so we're, we're going to be able to be, and the kids are going to be able to be much more intentional with, this is, this is the, this is the field, this is the path that I'm going to go, and this is the test that I'm going to take because it has meaning for us.
And if you look at nineteen twenty, there were seventy-seven students who took the ACT. That, that was because colleges weren't requiring it at that point, and there was no need to take it. So then we went up to two fifty-seven. The way that we have to report it now, ACT quit providing us with our normal reporting form, so we had to update the way we, we report it, and these total tested numbers include multiple testers. So if my daughter took it three times, she's on there three times, and it counts her all three. So that's why that number goes up significantly to two fifty-seven.
And John, Dr. Boyd, the, the workforce one, work keys, I think we called it, does that have a score as well? Like, I know you're saying that it may test for like mechanical or, so is it, is it comparable score?
So actually, what it will do is, uh, they, it actually will give them a value. And Mr. Hay, I don't know if this is something that Mr. Hayden has, or this is something that work keys has, because we haven't worked with it enough. But it actually will even give you a projected score of what that would look like if it was ACT and not necessarily ACT work keys. So it would say, you know, at the platinum level, that's the equivalent of scoring a twenty-eight or higher on the ACT.
We've talked about this in the budget, um, when, I think you and I had a conversation. Are we continuing to pay for that for students?
One or the other, yeah.
Yeah, one or the other, correct.
We, we didn't, Mr. Toomes came to me a, a year and a half ago and said, some kids aren't going to college, so why are we forcing them to? Wouldn't it make more sense to spend the money to provide them with ACT work keys since they're, we know they're going that direction? And since he meets with them at every senior individually, and he knows what their, their tendencies are? Um, I thought that was a good, and I, I think Dr. Boyd agreed.
I do, too.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, we've got something that's going home in the mail for parents, so that way parents have a, have a voice and have a say in kind of their direction. We don't want the kid just to ultimately make the decision they're going to take work keys or they're going to take ACT. And so we want to engage the parents in, in that discussion for the kids as well.
So you may have covered this, and Josh may have asked it, but we talked, you talked about the, like, the scoring rubric. Is it the same, but is the work keys and the regular ACT composite in that score?
On our chart?
Yes.
Not the work.
That's just the ACT.
Yes, correct.
Which I would assume that there will be reporting data next year for.
I would hope.
ACT and work keys, yes.
I had one other question on, uh, the MAP scores and the, uh, N W E A. Um, are those tests reflecting some of the same areas of focus?
I would need, I don't dig into the N W E A data like we dig into the MAP data. Uh, but I've heard the principals would probably be able to speak to that a little better. Um, I think the answer is yes.
Yes. We, we have run some small correlation studies, not, not the whole group of, of all of our four hundred and twenty students, but taken certain subgroups of those and, and run comparisons to see if the scores on the N W E A match what they eventually get on their grade level assessment. And I, I don't want to quote any numbers incorrectly, but I can tell you there's a strong correlation. We're very happy, as a matter of fact, at how strongly they correlate.
So being a part of that program, getting those more immediate results, that's a valuable tool.
Indeed.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Dr. McLeod's up again?
All right. As we know, education's not just about taking tests. Um, some of it is, um, being ready and having your needs met, and I think this program, Backpacks for Friday, is part of that. So we're lucky enough to have several partners help us make this a reality, and we'll go through that in a minute. But it, it's ran through the Southeast Missouri Food Bank. Our, we have one backpack that costs three hundred fifty per backpack. So as we, as we raise funds and try to supply backpacks for students that may need, uh, a little bit more help with getting nutritious food, we have to fundraise for that. So any, any contributions are definitely appreciated. So within those bags, they get thirty-six weeks of food, and that begins in September and ends in May. We have Mr. Robinson's class has helped to separate that, and he meets with the truck, and he goes through that, and we've gotten that straightened out. I think as some of you can attest, some of the workforce, I think, has had turnover. So as they well, as the food bank dealt with the turnover, um, he had to kind of adjust and work with them to make sure that our orders are correct, but he's done a great job in getting that line out. Uh, as I said, our program's funded through donations. We've gotten donations through organizations, local businesses, community members, and even teachers within our own district. So for this year, we have fifty-five backpacks. I believe that's the same number as we had last year. Bloomsdale has twenty-one backpacks, and Saint Jen Elementary has thirty-four. And you can see our enrollment, we're at about three hundred in Bloomsdale and five hundred and twenty-five in Saint Jen Elementary, and both of them are grades K through five. So if you multiply out the number of backpacks times three hundred fifty per piece, that's a large chunk of money. So to be able to get that amount from our community each year to support students that need that help is, is huge. And so as we're thanking people, we want to make sure that we recognize all these wonderful people that are part of making sure that this is running smoothly. There's a lot of moving parts. We've got to make sure that we take the, the pallets in, make sure we have the right amounts, separate them out, and then make sure they get to the correct places, and then once they get to the schools, um, the schools have to make sure they get home with the children. And then, as you can see, we've had several community partners that have contributed, so we want to make sure that we put them up on the screen here. These are the people that have donated up to date, um, this year. So from the last time we gave you the Backpacks for Friday report last year to now, these are all the people that have donated up to this point. But we're hoping to continue to accept donations and continue to fund that program for students in need.
When are you going to look for more donations?
When? Starting tonight.
Can you talk about how you just come to district office to donate?
Correct, yes. They can call at the district office, they can email me. Um, if someone's interested at the building level, if they talk to the teacher or the principal, they can point them in the right direction.
And for parents and guardians, if they have interest in their child receiving a backpack, how do, how do they go about that?
Yes, they can either, there are several different ways. They can contact the teacher, um, they can contact the counselor, their principal.
Okay.
I believe the counselors are pretty plugged in as well, and so are the principals and the teachers. They have a tendency to be able to identify also students where maybe the family doesn't, they're either not aware of the program, or maybe they feel like, well, we don't need it. or maybe they feel like, well, we don't need it, we don't wanna take a handout. But to convince people that, well, maybe you can just take it for a couple of weeks until you feel like you don't need it anymore and you can cancel anytime. So they do a good job of identifying families and approaching that subject that's kinda hard to approach, um, in a delicate way versus somebody like me that doesn't know the family saying, hey, why don't you sign up?
Oh, you left this to me?
I left this to you.
I figured I was talking to you. So this is, is our annual disaggregated graduation rate data. Um, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, we compare the Saint Genevieve, R2 school district to the state of Missouri. And you can see that we're at ninety point seven total percent and the state is at eighty-nine point seven percent. We've got a hundred and thirty-seven total graduates last year and the state had fifty-nine thousand six hundred. Right below that, it breaks it out by gender. Um, but we were looking at that and it's, it's pretty close between males and females. Uh, but we flip-flopped with the state. The states, there's more females than males and at Saint Genevieve, there's a few more males than there are females. But it's pretty close. And then, uh, we like to break it out, um, by group. We don't have a lot of diversity in Saint Genevieve, so a lot of our groups, even if we do have students in the Asian category, they have to meet a certain level in order to be statistically significant. And so if, if they don't meet that level, then they put a little asterisk in there. So you can see that multiracial, we have some students in and white, we have some students in. And of course, the state is, um, they have enough students for all of those categories. And then one we like to focus on is the free and reduced lunch, um, percentages. We're at seventy-six point five percent. And the state is at eighty-one point seven. Um, and then gifted as well, um, pretty proud of our gifted numbers. And then military and special education. Any questions about disaggregated graduation? I would love to have more students in more categories here to be able to talk about serving them appropriately. But we're a bit limited, so. We also had to change the approach, uh, for this, Desi switched their website, um, and came up with some, some good graphical representation. So you will find these gra, these are the graphs that came off of the Desi website. Uh, they're doing a pretty good job, um, putting the numbers together to make them more manageable and to make them more easily understood. So we're, we plan on pulling from there. Um, we hope they continue to do that. Any questions?
Okay, we're, we're going to move on to the principal reports, but I think we're going to speed down to the high school. We have a young man that has to get to a basketball game. So let me find it for you.
Okay, so just to start off with some of the pictures, um, on the very left-hand side, um, you can see the librarians in the middle because they had their Christmas luncheon, their annual Christmas luncheon. And then on the very right side in the middle, that is the French Three class. And Miss Yezel took that class to the middle school, um, band director, Mrs. Elders. And they learned about the Festival of Music and Mrs. Elders taught them some rhythms and patterns of a drum circle. I don't have a keyboard. Thank you. Okay.
Um, we have our, um, our Elks student of the month, who was Jillian Gag, pictured there on the, on the far left. And then we have our Rotary student of the month, Jameson Kemper, there on the, uh, top of the middle as well.
Our positive office for, office referrals this month were John Clinton twice, Aiden Lewis, Lena Wallman, Hayden Ackman, Caleb McBride, Lilian Schwint, Ainsley McLard, Celia Fay, who is, um, a foreign exchange student from Spain, I think this year. J.C. Bowman, Kason Kellum, Aiden Roth, Kale Clemmons, Carly Fernow, Justin Slinkard, Laney Yemnitz, Brooklyn Johnson, Lucy Sears, Damon Brooks, Brock Woodward, Paul Taylor, Emma Gek, McKenna Pollak, and Drake Wabrick, Wybrick.
And then moving on, we have our boys' basketball team pictured there on the far left. Uh, they won their first home basketball game this past Friday over our seven, sixty-eight to forty-four. Starting out their season at home with a, a very dominant win over our seven. Uh, and then pictured on the far right is the girls' basketball game, who also won their first home basketball game against Kingston, uh, last Wednesday. Forty-four to thirteen.
In the middle is the wrestling. I have no idea what that video is. Do you know what that video is? I didn't put it there. But anyway, behind it is the girls' wrestling team, but the boys won against the M- the Mobily duel this weekend and the girls ended up going to Elden for a tournament, but I think they lost.
Uh, and then pictured there on the far left is, uh, the Gaming Club Smash Gaming Event that they hosted. It was a tournament of the Super Smash Bros. game on the Nintendo Switch, uh, with the winner being Charles Strohst. Um, but to enter into the tournament, you had to bring in a donation, which was sent to the food pantry as well. Picture there's the, the amount of donations that they got for that tournament as well, with the winner getting a gift card to Iggy's Pop Shop.
On the top right, Ricky Hunter, who's a senior this year, scored his one thousandth point against the Sykesden, during the Sykesden game. So that's pretty impressive. And then on the bottom right, um, our mentors. Last month, we did a pumpkin decorating competition and this month, we were focusing on dodgeball versus trivia. And the winners this time were Miss Stafford for trivia and Mr. Swin's advisory, advisory for dodgeball.
Uh, and then there on the far left, as you can see, North County came to, came to visit, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. And they took a, they took a tour of our school. They got to see some of our inclusive programs and, um, see what we do in Miss Cleghorn's class. And everything regarding that as well.
Okay, in the middle is our bridge building competition that we went to this year. Rap, Mr. Rap took, um, all of his bridge building classes all together for a whole day and we went to CMO and we ended up placing third overall. Again, I have no idea what this video is and why it's there. I'm serious. But behind it was our FAFSA night and that was, we hosted it this year. And it was just, uh, an event that provided like the students and their parents some work session information. And Jeffco sent some representatives down. And then we'd like to say a thank you to Mr. Tooms, Solkowski, and the senior grade level team for being a part of it.
It's gotta be those elves on the show.
I mean, talk about it.
Uh, and pictured there in the middle is the, uh, former volleyball coach, Coach Drum, who was inducted to the Missouri Volleyball Coaches Hall of Fame. I know he was a very instrumental coach whenever it came to, came to volleyball in the past. And he's pictured there with our current volleyball coach, uh, Coach Boswell.
Um, on either side are Coach Coleman and Coach Bonnell's two-hundredth victory that they got this week. I guess Coleman got his last week during the Valley game, which, that is super exciting to end on a Valley game. Coach Bonnell's was during the Westminster and they ended up winning sixty-eight to twelve.
Uh, and then our Teacher of the Month for, um, December was Coach Wolk, who was the, uh, is an English teacher in the high school, but she's also our, one of our speech and debate coaches. And then a student wrote this about her. Um, every day we get into her class. She always provides a warm welcoming to all of her students. I look forward to her class every day because I know that I'm in a safe environment to tell her anything. She ensures that we have the correct resources and more for all the projects and other activities we do in her class. The effort she puts into her curriculum is a motivation to all of her students to push harder. She always understands if we ever have, are extremely stressed, overwhelmed, or even tired. Having a teacher that can recognize your feelings and respect, that is very rare in the school. I think, I thank her for everything she's provided me with and helping me pursue my passions. Being part of that speech and debate team as well, I know she's not just a great teacher, but a great coach as well, always pushing us to be our best.
Um, on that bottom right is this month's screensaver on our Chromebooks. And it just has the schedule for all of the events that we have, sports and other extracurriculars. Okay, so this last slide, um, Dr. Smith approached our second hour school development class with this competition in a way from the Missouri's School Boards Association. And we were supposed to make a video about the importance of other cars and pedestrians stopping to the, like, stop arm when a bus comes through at the end of the day or in the morning. And the winners were gonna get a prize of one thousand to the students, like a whole group of students would share a thousand dollars. And then five hundred dollars would be, go to the school. And if we won, we would put it toward new seating in the senior tee. And this is our video, if you wanna click the underlined.
About twenty-six million children in the US ride the bus to and from school every day.
There are many benefits to riding the bus, such as teaching responsibility and time management skills.
However, more kids are injured getting on or off the bus than riding in them. It's the law to stop your vehicle when a school bus arm is extended.
Be on alert when you drive near a school bus. Watch for stops, the stop arm, lights, kids crossing, et cetera. When you see a violation, you can report to the proper authorities. Thank you guys for watching. Bye.
We talked a little bit about the creation of it, so I think that piece is super cool.
So something else I wouldn't like just add to it is all of that was really hand-drawn. Like we had each hand-drawn at least something, a part of it, and Lindsay put it together in a video. Um, I think you used Canva, right?
I started out, I started out with a different software and the day of that it was due, the software fell through and weren't able to use it anymore. And so I had to completely remake it and turns out what we wanted could have been done on Canva.
Um, and then Charlie and I went to one of these back rooms and recorded all of the sound. So.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll go to Bloomsdale Elementary. Uh, Mrs. Heverly couldn't be here. I was supposed to read through the slides, but I kind of asked Lindsay to do it and she didn't say no.
I don't know if I've ever heard Lindsay say that.
I will turn it over to Lindsay.
So starting out with this first slide, there's positive office referrals. And these are the students who received a positive office referral for displaying one of the seven habits. We have Kayden Aler, Riley Reese, Scarlett Riley, Bryston Torrey, Cassidy Halpert Beck, Crosby Wolk, Aiden Schweiss, Aleah Terry, Shay Donovan, Jack Ballou, Kendrick Barnes, and Liam Hughes. And then we have a few more. We have Zanuel Clump, Wyatt Schilling, Louis Guildford, Sawyer Edwards, Harper Schaefer, and Carson Johnson. Mrs. Byer's first grade student, Lily Schwint, earned over a hundred good behavior points, um, and tickets in her classroom. And she used those tickets to save up and earn the assist the prin, uh, the, uh, assist the principal for an hour. She helped with morning duty, greeting students, observing in the classrooms, and even lunchroom duty. She was a great helper that day. Then the kindergarteners also dressed up as Indians enjoyed and enjoyed their Thanksgiving feast, which you can see in the top right. On December thirteenth, the fifth graders participated in the Day of Graduation led by Officer Finch. They then performed their Christmas concert led by Mr. Friedmeyer. They were all able to play the guitar, bucket drums, and sing Christmas songs. Bloomsdale Elementary also hosted their annual family fun night called Come Meet Santa for a Jolly Good Time. Mr. and Mrs. Claus were the guests of honor. That evening featured fun stations including letters to Santa, making a Christmas winter bucket list, making a snowflake ornament, candy cane twirl game, reading Christmas stories, making gingerbread houses, singing Christmas carols, and even yoga. They served chili, nachos, hot dogs, and a dessert. There were about sixty-five families that attended, two hundred fifty feet, two hundred fifty-five people in attendance. Santa and Mrs. Claus were a huge hit, as you can see in the top, in the bottom left. The building has definitely been in the Christmas spirit. Looks like you guys are too. And the kindness leaders led a toy drive in honor of Adley Burke, Burke Bigler, Adley's Army. They collected four hundred and fifty-seven toys for children in Saint Louis Children's Hospital. The children, the PTO also put on the annual Santa shop where the students were able to shop for their friends and family. And it was a huge success as they were shopping in the picture in the bottom middle. Fifth grade students earned a reward for great behavior and voted to make gingerbread houses. And the dress-up days that they had this past week have also been enjoyed by the students as well. And the very last slide is a little bit of behind the scenes. Uh, teachers have been busy working on end-of-quarter assignments, assessments. Uh, they have been having their data team meetings to group students for the next round of RTI when they return from break. They have their ELA team working hard on curriculum. The sped and KDG kindergarten through third grade teachers are continuing L E T R S training. And teachers have a meeting with Shannon Heiserer for ELA training. That is all.
Great job, Lindsay.
I have a funny personal story about the Santa shop. We gave both of our boys some money to go buy gifts for mom and dad and then for each other. Well, Lincoln came home with a ball and it was wrapped and said, "To Luke and Lincoln from Lincoln."
That's good. I love it.
Hi, good evening. This first slide, um, on the left shows pictures of our grades three through five family fun night that we had at the end of November. It was a literacy and math themed game night. And typically at our family fun nights, the students leave with a parting gift of a book and a few takeaway things. But this year, the teachers decided to surround the activities around books. So we had like a book walk and so students could win books during the book walk. They did book bingo. They did a booklet and we had, as you can see, kids leaving with four, five, six books. And we received a lot of feedback from the families that they really liked the take-home books, um, for the prizes. And then we had our, um, recently our November Students of the Month. And in the top, Mr. Kingery and I are with the K-two students and the bottom, the three-five students. And these students were nominated by their teachers just for reaching goals, doing kind things, being good friends. It could be a variety of reasons that these students were chosen. And then they get to eat lunch with Mr. Kingery and I and then we sign a book and they get to take it with them. This slide right here is our kindergarten and first grade music programs. They were both about a week apart. So Mrs. Bowman and Mr. Friedmeyer had their work cut out for them. They were both Christmas themed. The kindergartners did, each class played a different instrument. And then the first graders, and it's hard to see on the top picture in the right, they're sitting there and they're playing the handbells that are on the floor. So they were pushing those to the rhythm of whatever song was being played. So hats off to those guys for pulling that off because both kindergarten and first grade have right around one hundred students. So it's pretty hard to orchestrate one hundred students and keep them on point and on track and they pulled it off somehow. This slide is a variety of all the Christmas activities that have been taking place. We had our parties today and due to our size and parking, we have to just have two different parties. So we had parties in the morning and parties in the afternoon. And in the bottom middle, I happened to walk into a kindergarten classroom and Mr. Kingery had become part of the game. So I had to take that opportunity to snap that picture. So I had to take that opportunity to snap that picture. Santa was also in the building today and he's always a big hit. So our K2 students and preschool students got to visit with Santa. And we had a few dress up days and at the bottom, those are our teachers that were dressed up as like their favorite Christmas character, I believe, or storybook character. And then in the bottom right, we did our radio caller contest again and Mrs. Aylert's won. She was the 11th caller at 11:00 AM and it was a lot of fun. But I found out that the teachers don't like to do it at 11:00, they like to do it at 10: before any of the lunch shifts start. Because there were some kindergarten teachers that were like, "Really?" I'm like, "Find a phone." Next slide, please. We had some positive officer referrals. Phoenix Flick, Graham Polite, Jay Sonderman, Nova Lacy, and Xander Welsh. Bottom row, Jaden Renaud, Nolan Bova, Emmeline Clayton, and Dustin Piper. And these students were chosen by their teachers or another teacher for demonstrating any part of the power acronym. And we have actually several more that we didn't get in time, so they will make the January cut. And we have feature teacher super staff and we have both November and December on this slide because they just weren't selected in time for the last board meeting. So our November feature teacher was Ms. Danielle Hefner. She is one of our special education teachers. And the super staff was Ms. Lisa Fargo. She's actually a special education paraprofessional in that classroom. And then December was Ms. Kim Brown. She's one of our special education teachers. And the December feature, our super staff was Ms. Jennifer Thomas and she is a special education paraprofessional. So if you see a theme there, these ladies are all related to special ed in some way. And rather than reading all of their different write-ups, to sum it up, it was all about their kindness, their patience, their caring, their doing whatever students needed and making sure that they provided them the best opportunity possible. So congratulations to all of them.
Okay.
One of the things that we do to help build number sense is called a number talk. So that, in the primary grades, that looks like some dots and we have the kids look at the dots. So I'm going to have you guys participate today. So they look at the dots and tell me how many and how did you see them? So how, does anybody want to volunteer? How many dots and?
Twelve.
Twelve. How did you see them? Like, did you count them one by one or did you see them in groups?
Groups.
So, and people see them different ways. Some people might see the eight and then two, two. Some might see two, four, four, two. It's, we, we start those conversations with kids and dots so they can start to be flexible with numbers and realize that it's 12, but it can be made by different ways. So as the kids get into more conventional numbers, we might do a number talk or call the number string. We might put six plus nine on the board and ask them, "What's the answer and how do they see it?" So some kids will start to think about that one on the six moving to the nine and making a 10 plus 5. So, and that's what we want them to do. So, and when they get older grades, we still teach the traditional algorithm, but it's not the first thing we teach and it's not the only thing we teach. So I'm going to have you guys do a number talk. I actually did these two number talks that I'm going to do with you in a fourth and fifth grade classroom and I'm going to show you some of the kids' thoughts after I get yours. So when we do a number talk, the kids will show a little thumbs up when they have the answer. And if they have a different strategy, they kind of show us with their fingers on these strategies. So the first one I want you guys to do is. 225 plus 49. It's all mental math with number talks. They don't get a pencil, paper. They just do it and give me a thumbs up. So give me a thumbs up when you have the answer and we'll share your strategies. Mr. Bova, would you like to share your strategy and your answer?
Sure. 225 plus 50 is 275, so it's 274.
There we go. So and some of the kids still broke it apart, like kind of almost thinking of the traditional algorithm in their head, but these are some of the responses. And when I do a number talk, I would, or the teachers would write down like Mr. Bova's suggestion, put his name by it so he can own it. And if we're wanting them to try that strategy, we might say, "Let's look at what Mr. Bova did and let's all try it his way on this next problem." But just to show you some of our kids thinking, this little guy kind of broke it apart, then the tens and the ones, and then he put them together and added the 200. This one kind of good? Something similar, so 200 plus 50 is 250 and then two plus, and this one took one from the 25, moved it over here and did 224 plus 50 equals 250. So different strategies there, all get there the same way, but this is more efficient than trying to write out the traditional algorithm. And that's what we want to teach them. We want to give them all these tools to get different answers. Okay, the second one I did, this one I loved. So it was, he told me five minutes, I'm trying, you know I could talk about that. 12 times 25, so thumbs up when you have this one. And I had some fifth graders have it already by now. Does anybody want to share their strategy or their answer? Mr. Getting, you're a math.
Sure. I did 25, I don't know how I explain this. The answer was 300 and I did four 25s is a hundred dollars, or a hundred dollars. Four banker, as you can tell, is 100 and then four goes into 12 three times.
Yeah. Did anybody do it a different way? I want to show their strategy. Ms. Diesel.
I did 25 times 10, which is 250, then I just added another 50.
Another 50 from the two.
Because there were two left.
They might do it a different way.
Same as Jer.
Just to show you some of our kids' strategies, I did the 12 times 5 was 20 and 12 times 20, they broke apart the 25. This one broke it down almost the same way, just a little bit different. This is like Mr. Getting, this is the way I did it and this is, so double in half is a strategy that we teach the kids. So you can double one number and half the other. So instead of thinking of this 12 times 25, this kid said, "Well, I did six times 50, 300." He had it like that. So this is, these are the kind of things that we want our kids doing. Quick little number sense. This is like a warm-up for a classroom. It's a five, 10-minute conversation and then you move on to the main lesson. So that's what we share with you. I've talked 200 miles an hour. You might have any questions?
That was great. Yes. We were all scared we weren't going to pass that show or you smart.
You did fantastic.
She practiced that with us and we were kind of like, uh, and she goes, "My fifth graders got this." We're like, okay, well, we're not smarter than a fifth grader. Andrea, that's fine. Okay. Are we ready?
Yeah.
We won't, we won't, you'll be okay. Okay. I am going to read off my little cheat sheet. Okay, so I am sure many of you have heard of the science of reading and a lot of conversations around education. And this year, we've had several K3 teachers, actually I think all of them, in extensive letters training. And also we have partnered with a representative from the Regional Professional Development Center and Kate Shannon Heiser. And she has come to do some trainings with our K5 teachers and also afterwards she does coaching days. And so her, she and I both go into classrooms or even just common plan time with the teachers and help with any of those topics that were covered in the trainings. We go in and just help the teachers where they need it in that support aspect. But within these trainings, they are talking about more like the deficit areas and the phonological and phonemic awareness of our students. And that's kind of at the foundational level where we need to start hitting some of those things that we're missing. And so that's really the basis of kind of the science of reading. So that's where these trainings kind of stemmed from and where our tier one instruction kind of starts with that. And so we've implemented our phonics instruction, which is with really great reading. And so today, we're kind of going to show you some of those things, but also before we get started with that, it's always great to have some background knowledge on vocabulary. So you guys get to match some vocab words and definitions. You're welcome. You can work with a partner if you'd like. I would suggest, I'm not your partner though, so you get, you get my emails. If you would like to work. We do have a cheat sheet, but you have to do this on your own. You want to share? I'll let you share.
This is a lot.
Yes, you will match the words to the definition. We do have a cheat sheet, but.
Yeah, well, we're going to try real hard. These are tricky. Okay.
Are we done yet?
No.
We should be able to do syllable.
So these are actually terms and definitions that our students are familiar with and we work with on a daily basis.
No, just those two.
Yes, those two.
Are you ready? Do you want to check?
Not yet.
I'll go with that one. You guess the next one.
Are you ready to check?
I guess.
Okay, here you go.
Okay.
I got these two, right?
Okay. We didn't have all these. Oh yeah, we didn't have morphine.
Oh, we're going to say happy birthday to her. She said, "No, thank you." Okay, that's our guesses.
Yes, Martha, we are fire. We got it.
You won't have morphology or morphine.
So we know these two.
Those two out when you get your break. Yeah. Sorry.
We got a hundred percent. It doesn't hurt to be an elementary teacher.
That's true. So true.
That's fun.
That was good.
I can come around and collect your bags if you, unless you really want to take them home as a souvenir.
We're good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You did okay?
Try and move. You're on caps lock.
We did. I'm going to walk you through a quick activity that we use with our students that will practice a few of those concepts from the matching activity you just completed. So I'm going to say a word. Say bat.
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 How many phonemes or sounds do you hear in the word bat? The minute I say that, students know that there is a strategy they can use to determine the number of phonemes or sounds that they hear in a word. to determine the number of phonemes or sounds that they hear in a word, and that strategy is called finger stretching. So with finger stretching, they start out by putting their fist to their chest, they say the word bat, then they bring out their hand and they extend one finger for each sound or phoneme they hear in the word, starting with the thumb. And then they bring their fist back to their chest, and they blend the word together and say it again. So let's try that with the word bat, I'll know you're ready when your fist is at your chest. Here we go, say the word with me, bat. At, bat. How many phonemes or sounds did you hear the word bat? Three. This is where we actually take them to their kits, and they can utilize those colored tiles off at the right-hand side. Each color tile will represent a phoneme or a sound that you heard in the word bat. Now, there are just a few things you need to know about the colored tiles. One is that you may choose any color tile you like to represent a sound, except for the vowel phoneme. The vowel phoneme or the vowel sound will always be the red color tile. The other thing is you only move one tile at a time. So for instance, I would say, what is the first sound you heard in the word bat? If they see B, if they see the letter B, I would say, that's the letter, can you tell me the sound? So go ahead and choose a colored tile, as long as you do not choose red. You pick it up and you will move it over on the working space. And if you can see, there's probably four red tiles, the students might have left there, you can move those. You would choose those colors. Color tiles. So we're not looking at any letters right now, this is strictly in the land of sounds, it's phonemic awareness. We don't work with letters, we're just working with sounds. This is the foundational piece that we start with, would be the at. Then I would say, what is the vowel phoneme or the vowel sound you hear in the word bat? Go ahead, and that requires the red tile, so you'll pick up your red tile. As you move it, you actually say the sound. And what is the last phoneme or the last sound you hear in the word bat? So you go ahead and you pick up a colored tile, move it over saying the sound that you do. Then we do something called touch and say. Touch and say is where you will run your finger, and you'll put a finger underneath each sound as you say it, and then you run your finger from left to right as you blend it back together. So let's do that now, here we go, ready? At, bat. This is strictly phonemic awareness. Megan's going to go ahead and extend this activity with you. And when she does, she's going to incorporate the graphemes under the letter tile, so that automatically moves it from phonemic awareness to phonics. And this is what our students do, so they all have these kits, and this is what our students are doing in the classrooms daily. So typically, we would be building CVC, consonant vowel, consonant words. Um, this is an activity we would do with our first graders. And, um, this activity is called sound training, which we have learned, um, as teachers in our letters training. So it's really great, what we're learning in our letters, we can take the next day and apply it right to our classroom. So it's been wonderful. Um, so we built the word bat, so we finger stretch, buh, at, bat. And now what we're going to do is we're going to change one phoneme, so just one sound. So we would state to our students, okay, you have the word bat, and we want to now create the word mat. So let's finger stretch the word mat. Mat. At, mat. So when we go from bat, what phoneme are we going to say goodbye to? And we, when we hear the word mat, what phoneme are we going to say hello to?
B and M.
Very good, so you're going to say goodbye to buh, and hello to mm. So boys and girls, I want you to go ahead and think about. I want you to go ahead and think about which phoneme are you going to take off and put back, and then you can grab a new one to replace, so you'll take this. And now we're going to incorporate the graphemes. So the graphemes are the letters. So when we think about the word mat, mm, at, mat, what graphemes or letters do you hear in that word? M A T, okay, so now you're going to build that word, so go ahead and you can grab your M A T. Nice job. Okay? So now we have the word mat, and we are going to create the word map. So when we think about, let's finger stretch that word, map. Mm, at, map. So if we're going from mat to map, we're going to say goodbye to which phoneme and hello to which phoneme? Very good, we're going to say goodbye to our t, and hello to our p. So replace your t, and then you're going to put your p back. Your grapheme p. Yeah, you're going to move it back.
Right now, the one, not the color.
No, you can keep your sound tile there.
You can keep, you.
She is three-sound.
Okay, and now when we're going to look at mat, um, we are going to go to mop. So let's go ahead and finger stretch the word mop. Mop. So when we think about the phonemes in that word, we're going to say goodbye to which letter? At, very good. We have, um, movements that we do with all of our letters, so we have a, eh, eh, uh, and ah. So if a student is struggling, we have, we can kind of help them out, you know, if they're like, ooh, is it I or E? If we give them a move, it's, they're going to know, oh, it's short I, eh, so they automatically know it's a pole. Um, so very good, so go ahead, you're going to now take your grapheme letter A off and replace it with which one? Oh, for mop. And we might extend this and say, turn and talk to your shoulder partner, use the word mop in a sentence. So go ahead and turn and talk to the person next to you. How would you create?
He did actually blitz a little bit of coke.
And then Diesel, can you share your sentence with us?
Um, I mop my floors.
Very good. So that's just a little glimpse of sound changing.
What, what do you do when they use it in the wrong tense, like when they say, I mopped my floor? Do they do that? And what do you do? I mean, do you correct it or just let it go? Just curious.
Like they're using it correctly.
Yeah. I would just, like, I just quickly touch on, you know what, our word is mop, what's the last sound you hear in mop? Now say mopped, what is the last sound you hear? That, that's actually the ED, which can make one of three sounds, because they learn that.
Yeah.
Another way you can quickly extend this activity to take it to a different level is by talking about multiple meaning words. So like for the word bat, I can create just a multiple meaning web on my whiteboard and say, you know what, bat has more than one meaning, who can tell me the meaning that they know for the word bat? Um, that extends it a little bit further, and kids will be able to talk to you, oh, you know, it's like something I, that I use when I play ball, or, oh, it's the animal. And then we talk about, you know what, it does have more than one meaning, and when you read, that's when you have to read to figure out which bat they're talking about. So that just extends it a little bit further, and it's a quick way to bring in those multiple meaning words.
And we also have writing too, if you open underneath, it's nice, it's kind of a little hidden compartment.
Oh, yeah.
We have our working board, which is where we can write the words that we're creating in sentences, and then we have multi-syllable boards where we're building multi-syllable words. So it's really nice, we have our, each kid has a little eraser marker that goes right with it, so the writing component can be brought right in. Um, in tier one, it, they share, yeah. But our tier two and tier three have their own kits.
Well, that's great, ladies. That's a whole lot different than I want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is an informational sheet too, that was attached to the back to kind of give you a little bit more information on like the science of reading and kind of how the brain works with that. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Uh, it's EC Vosler, not E Vosler. Unless you, unless you would like to answer your question.
Ladies, you talked a little bit about tier one, are there different tools for tier two and three?
So that is kind of like tier one, but then also it's what they do in the other tiers, that it would be a little bit more extensive and more, um, in-depth with what they're doing with those students, and it's more targeted. So with our screeners that we use within tier one, they, all of our teachers screen their students, and that's the data that's used to then kind of target instruction in tier two and tier three with these ladies.
And so when we say tier one, we just mean, uh, common curriculum, grade level. Tier two would be more, just they need more time or a little bit more support. And then tier three is, they have gaps in their learning, so you're specifically targeting a certain area.
So it goes one, two, and three.
Yeah, yeah, you kind of think of it as like a funnel.
Thank you, that was one of the best presentations. All right. Uh, next on the agenda, not quite as exciting. We have music, property liability, and workers' compensation insurance.
Yes, um, so for this update, this renewal, uh, there is an eight percent membership credit. Um, and I'll get into the numbers in a few slides back. Um, there's a two-point-two percent surplus allocation credit, this has been added in, for two thousand twenty-three. Um, this coverage basically covers property and equipment breakdown, general liability, buses, um, even though we don't run our own buses, school board liability, workers' compensation, the treasurers, bonds that we're required to have, cyber liability, pollution liability. Um, for this renewal, we do not have any additions to our property, uh, properties. We probably will in the near future with Prop SG. Um, so this slide, it's kind of hard to see, but this shows you all of our properties that are covered under the liability insurance. These are the two thousand twenty-two content per square feet, um, coverage, coverages. So in the yellow, I added two thousand twenty-three, and you see that there is an increase in every category. Some are larger than normal, but if you think about it, um, with inflation and replacement costs, everything costs more now, so these, this coverage had to go up, um, to cover replacement cost. So that increase, um, is causing our renewal assessment to go up um, from two hundred ninety-two thousand, I'll just estimate here, to three hundred and eight. Um, we are getting a total credit this year of thirty-one thousand five hundred and nine, so the renewal rate this year is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred dollars. Um, this is our twenty-seventh year with music, um, we receive great coverage. They are wonderful to work with, anytime we have a worker comp, worker compensate, or workman's comp claim, or we have an issue on our campuses that they have to deal with, they jump right in and assist us, so. Um, I would recommend that we go ahead and renew, uh, with music and continue our liability, workman comp, and property insurance with them.
How did they figure the cred, is it different every year, I mean, is it the same percentage every year?
No, um. Yes, and then what they have, they could give back, and they spread it out among all their members.
I recall a conversation, um, last year when, um, several public schools were getting sued for their mask mandates, and a fear of, um, insurance for legal expenses. Would that have fallen music, and did we see anything out of that? Not us personally, but a rate increase across the board because of that? Or is that different insurance?
Uh, it would, it would be music, but in my opinion, no.
Okay, well, most of the losses were dropped anyway, so.
Right, I think what we're seeing is truly the inflation.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the renewal assessment rate with Missouri United School Insurance Council, music as presented.
I'll second it.
Another motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Well, that'll be under.
The construction manager has to carry that issue.
Yes, that's part of his responsibilities.
Until it's built, okay.
Yep, until it's built, and then we assume. All right.
All right, next under new business, we have the annual audit.
Thank you. We have Mr. Chris Sudo here with Clifton Larson Allen, and he's going to present the information on the audit.
Let's see, is there a clicker here, or to advance the slides? Okay, well, great, um, well, good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank the board, uh, for inviting CLA, uh, this evening to present, uh, the independent external audit results for St. Genevieve County, uh, R-two school district. Um, and this is for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two. And this, you know, independent external audit is required, uh, you know, by the, by the state of Missouri, uh, as well as, uh, the Office of Management and Budget, because the district does receive federal funds. So just to cover the terms of the engagement really quick, um, basically, we can break this down into three separate areas. Uh, first being, uh, you know, we provide an opinion as to whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. Uh, secondly, um, as mentioned, the district, uh, does receive federal awards and does expend in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, uh, which basically is the threshold, uh, by the United States Office of Management and Budget that triggers a, a single audit. Um, and we'll get into, there was actually two federal major programs this year. Um, you know, basically, there's, there's some additional dollars, some relief funds, uh, so most of the districts that we're seeing, you know, are, are expending more dollars. Uh, we do issue a separate report on internal controls, uh, as, as part of the financial statement audit. Uh, you know, that report basically would identify any deficiencies in internal controls. Uh, you know, it would be reported there in that, in that letter. Um, we do, uh, perform an examination of management's assertion that it did comply with, uh, Missouri laws and regulations. Uh, and we'll get into, we actually provide an opinion on that. And, you know, that, that's what's, the requirements that are listed there in the schedule of selected statistics. So just to cover really quick, uh, the overall audit scope and coverage, um, you know, it's definitely worth mentioning that we don't audit every single dollar. Uh, you know, we, we do perform what we call a risk-based approach audit, and what that means is, is the amount of time that we spend in each area is commensurate with the identified risk in that audit area. Um, I definitely think it, it's worth mentioning, um, that, uh, CLA, we do use some robust, uh, data analytics as part of our risk assessment, so we actually obtained the entire general ledger. Uh, we, we audit, uh, quite a few Missouri school districts, so we can use a lot of that intelligence that we have, uh, to look for anomalies within the general ledger, to see if there's, you know, areas that we should look into, you know, if there's further investigation warranted. Um, you know, we definitely followed up on a few things, but, uh, you know, nothing to really report there. Um, we do identify management override of controls as a possible fraud risk. Um, you know, clearly, there's collusion, uh, that, you know, that, that really is not, not an area that, um, you know, you can identify through things like data analytics or risk, you know, or, uh, you know, risk-based approach. But management override of controls, there's definitely some additional procedures that we perform, uh, to review that. And specifically, uh, we do journal entry testing, uh, looking for a lot of different, uh, specific parameters that, that, you know, uh, we look at to see if there's any possible management override of controls. Uh, in addition to that, we do perform, um, interviews with management, uh, just personnel, accounting personnel, just, just to see if, you know, there are any concerns, uh, anything that, that warrants any further investigation. Uh, I am here to tell you that I was not made aware of any fraud within the district. So on this slide, it's just some of the areas that we spend a significant amount of time, uh, on the audit, specifically internal controls, uh, you know, that, that's the one area that we spend a, a lot of time testing. Uh, clearly, the, the federal awards, the compliance, um, Missouri compliance, so, so just to name a few. So just to cover, uh, the high-level audit results, on page one of the financial statement, uh, package is what we refer to as our independent auditor's report. Uh, for those familiar with independent auditor's reports, it looks a little different this year because we did implement a new accounting standard. In the first paragraph is going to be our opinion. Um, and the way that opinion is written, the language, uh, that is what we refer to as an unmodified opinion. And that is exactly, uh, what the board should expect to see. Any deviation should definitely ra- raise concern, and that is the, the cleanest opinion that's available under our standards. On page thirty-two is that, um, letter related to the financial, uh, statement audit, uh, over internal controls. Basically, we, we just report there that we did not identify any material weaknesses. So, so no deficiencies in internal controls, so that is, uh, very clean. Um, on page thirty-four is our report on compliance for each of the federal major programs. Um, so basically, that again is an unmodified, clean opinion. Uh, I always want to point out that, you know, there were two federal major programs, so, so there, there's, thresholds are used to determine what programs we will be auditing. Um, the education stabilization fund, so the relief funds, and then the child nutrition cluster, uh, was selected, uh, which basically, we audited eighty percent of the total federal expenditures by selecting those two, uh, federal. which basically we audited 80% of the total federal expenditures by selecting those two federal major programs. And then on page 39 is the report on transportation dispersments. That's just an in relation opinion. And that just basically says that, you know, it's material in that respect. So fairly presented. And then on page 41 is that examination report related to management's assertion that the district complied with, you know, laws and regulate, regulations. And basically, you know, our examination report indicates that we, we believe the district did comply. So as you can see, very clean, you know, at a high level, the, the audit results. So there is a, a page within the financial package that's basically the, the summary of the auditor's results. And basically, this is a checkbox on the auditor's results. And you should see everything line up in the right-hand column. At the very bottom, there is auditee qualified as low-risk auditee. It's no, that basically just has to do with, with the threshold, the, you know, the coverage that we're required to obtain. So with, with this specific district, we're required to obtain, obtain at least 40% coverage of the federal expenditures, you know, tested. Like I said, we, we tested over 80%. And then we do have some required communications with governance. You know, as mentioned, I believe that this is a very clean audit. There was clearly no difficulties with management. You know, we've been working with the district for quite a while now, and honestly, they, they do a great job. You know, it's very collaborative. They're extremely helpful. You know, this audit process gets started all the way back in April, and we're finally here tonight to present the results. There's hundreds, if not a thousand, requests. I mean, a lot, you know, a lot goes into this. So the district does a great job with it as, as they have historically. Clearly, no disagreements. There were no transactions with a lack of authoritative guidance. I always want to mention that estimates are used in preparing these financial statements. We do review the estimates for management bias. We don't believe there is any. We believe they're fair. No change in the audit scope. And then we do want to mention that management will provide signed representations to us, you know, upon completion of the audit, you know, when I actually sign it. And then no uncorrected or corrected misstatements were noted. And then just finally, I, I just want to point out that, you know, under ARPA, you know, DESI is passing, you know, the additional SER funds. And that's through, you know, the way the legislation's written through 2025. I think it's just really important to highlight that, because, you know, we're going to continue to see, you know, an increase in, in federal funding. You know, there's, with, with those awards comes a lot of responsibility, additional, you know, additional audit. You know, it, it's just the resources. I just want to point out that, you know, a lot goes into this process. There's a lot, you know, additional resources are needed within the, in the district. You know, like I said, there's just a lot of responsibility that goes with it. So just, just wanted to highlight that really quick. I think that concludes my presentation. You know, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And again, my name is Chris Sudo. I am the, you know, signing principal with CLA. And I just want to point out that, you know, CLA, you know, we, we do, I think we do about seven or eight. We do eight school districts in the state of Missouri. So, you know, just to kind of talk about our qualifications, and I specifically lead our education practice. So I, I do K through 12, community colleges as well as public universities. So just want to highlight that. So just want to say thanks for the, we definitely appreciate the opportunity to serve the board and definitely appreciate the relationship. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to all the building admin and district admin for another clean audit.
Yep, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual audit for the 2021, 2022 school year as presented.
Second.
Jamie.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have a board resolution for the St. Genevieve County Board for the Development of Disabled Application for Funds.
Yes. I put in onboard docs a copy of the resolution and then draft copies of the grant application. The resolution is basically authorizing Mrs. Clegg, Ms. Clegg-Horn, Mrs. Jury, and myself to complete an application for funds with the St. Genevieve County Board for the Development of Disabled. It also authorizes the maximum amount for that grant to be 35,000. And I did amend that today from, and then we increased it up from 25 to 35. So the resolution has been updated with that new amount. And on the resolution, we had to identify the purpose of the items we were going to buy. So we did on the last item today, there is a Frankie A800 coffee machine. Or, and we added, or similar, similar espresso machines. We found out today that that, the Frankie A800 is like $31,000. It is the machine that is used at Common Grounds and comes with a yearly fee to have the machine. So we're not sure that is going to be the machine that we request because I, I think the one at Common Grounds this week had problems maybe? After several years. So we're looking at similar models that will be cheaper. So we went ahead and increased to 35. We know that's a big ask of the development, this board. So we wanted to make sure we had a cheaper option. And Christie, Ms. Christie is still working on that. So we feel 35 is the maximum, and we don't think we're even going to go that high. But it will depend what that board, that board decides to do.
Quite an application.
Yeah, yes, it is.
It's a big application. But what we're going to do in the cafeteria, there is a storage room that has a, a roll-up window. Where we have some equipment, stainless steel equipment that was donated a couple of years ago that's been in storage. So we're going to set that area up as a coffee shop.
Awesome.
So Ms. Christie and her team is, are trying to make it where they can get the skills needed to move to Common Ground for our special education students. Not necessarily just the students in her room, but.
That's awesome.
Yes. Yes.
And they're going to, they're going to partner with Dr. Smith, I think, in taking a look at like a, like a school store or a school shop in that space as well. So they're going to partner with our Business Tech SBD students and kind of have a joint partnership with it, so.
That's great.
The funds that they raised, do they use it for like the classroom or what do they do? I'm assuming they sell the coffee.
Yes.
And do they like use it for their classroom or what do they do with those funds that they raise?
Um, she does a lot of things for Special Olympics.
It's, it's, we supply.
Supplies, yeah.
I've not looked at their statement lately, but they, they, they're cheap.
Yeah, so they're not turning a huge profit.
Yeah, they're not turning a huge profit.
No, they're not.
But it is a very good experience and this equipment will be good for parking that and so on too.
Absolutely.
And even beyond Common Grounds. Jenny, I think McDonald's has these machines.
And the drinks, like Jamie said, are pretty inexpensive. You can get a, a tea for a dollar. Now, you can tell I get that, or strawberry lemonade, that's my other one. That's a dollar fifty.
We're going to start sending them to school to get those drinks.
I'm sure she would do it for you, so. But the grant does require the resolution. So we ask that you approve that tonight so we can move forward with getting this submitted.
Stackable washer and dryer and those things?
We have a washer and dryer in there now that is used by our cooks and custodians. Just making it a stackable unit will create more space for the kids and, and we can do some organization with the laundry detergent and some other things in that space then.
So they help do the laundry for other places in the building, the students do?
This area does. The students don't actually do the laundry for the cooks and the custodians, but if they're in there, it could be a skill set. Yes. Yes.
I think it's great.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Who's making it?
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing special education teacher Christie Clegg-Horn, Director of Student Services Jamie Jury, and Superintendent Dr. Julie Fleet to complete an application for funds. And if the application is approved, enter into a contractual agreement with the St. Genevieve County Board for the Development of Disabled.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we move on, I just want to let everyone know Martha usually, Mrs. Reesinger usually does this. But we've had the audit for approximately a week to look over, so we did not just receive it this evening.
Right, right.
And it is, it's exciting reading.
All forty-eight pages.
All forty-eight pages.
Well, and just for everybody to know, we get our board packets a week. That way, if we have any questions, then we can go to them and clear them up. Because most time, it's something they can just tell us.
All right. And lastly, we have Ms. Diesel. Will we adjourn to executive session?
All right, I'll make a motion under revised Missouri statute 610.021. I motion that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting with a closed record and closed vote after a short break for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees, and scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, and preparation, including any discussion or work products on behalf of a public government body or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups. And we'll take a roll call vote. Hang on one second here. Jamie Ballou?
Mrs. Diesel, you, you need a second.
I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Who's seconding jobs?
I'll second that.
You know, I could do this for a hundred years and never really do it right. I make a different mistake every time.
That's all right.
Okay, now we're going to take a roll call vote. Okay, Jamie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mr. Boba?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Gettinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
And Mrs. Reesinger?
Yes.
Okay. Seven, zero.